City Council meeting order. First like to ask everyone to stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could you please do roll call?
Craig Kuchel, Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulham.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Kylie Serna.
Here.
Okay. I believe everyone was given a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting. Have a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. Do we have to go into a public hearing for the...
Yeah. You need to suspend the meeting and then open the public hearing.
Okay, first matter of business, we have a public hearing for the confirming resolution for a tax abatement for AB Cinema, so we actually have to suspend this meeting and open a public hearing.
Make a motion to make this a record.
Yeah.
We'll do that, yeah.
I guess I'll make a motion to suspend the meeting and open a public hearing.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Okay. The purpose of a public hearing is to seek public comment with regard to the requested tax abatement that was submitted by AB Cinema. I believe Audra Snyder is here along with Cory and Barb Aptholzer, who are the applicants. The request is for a five-year tax abatement on personal property and a 10-year abatement on real estate improvements. So, Audra, if you want to make a brief comments, if you have any, and then it's open to the public for any questions that you may have. After the conclusion of the public hearing, the public hearing will be closed. We'll go back into the regular council meeting, and at that point, a confirming resolution can be introduced and entertained by council at that point. It's the next step if the abatement is ultimately granted and after the public hearing is held.
Thank you. I think the only, there are a couple of clarifications that I would like to present, and one of them is on the statement of benefits for the personal property. Part of that figure that we submitted does include installation charges, labor and installation charges for the theater equipment, and that was questioned along the way. I talked to Tim about it yesterday, and I also talked to the accessories office, and through both conversations, it was concluded that that could be something that would be included in the amount for the tax abatement. So, I just wanted to bring that, and it was, even at the last meeting, there was an invoice that was attached to the statement of benefits, and that was a figure, and it was line items, nothing that we put in there since then. I just wanted to point that out and let you know that. Tim and I did talk about it, and we felt and concluded that it was something that was coming through to include.
It's a little different than where an applicant does its own labor. You can't abate that, but in this case, because of the unique nature of the personal property, it requires installation by somebody who knows what they're doing. It's a cost of installing the equipment.
Sure.
It's no different than constructing a building. You have labor costs in the construction of the building improvements as well, but that's included in the building improvements, too.
I assume it's a big part of the cost, is actually having to install.
And just to show the difference, the theater seats, they purchased ahead of time, and they installed them themselves, so no charge for the labor for the install.
They will be installed.
They will be installed, but there's nothing included in what we asked for that would include labor or installation of the seats. This is all the actual theater, the sound booth, and, you know, just a lot of technology going on, something that they would not recall, right, to install on their own, so, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of the conversations that we had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public comment. Any questions?
Do we have any questions from the public? No? From council, anybody?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
I'll make a motion to reopen our city council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. Do we have any answers in a minute?
Okay.
So we need to make a matter of record advertisement for the public hearing, and I just want to note that in the publication, it did have the incorrect address. The address for the AB Cinema is 130 West Menos Street. Everything else in the ad is correct.
I'll make a motion to make that public, or matter of record, noting that correction of the address.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
And then the other thing is, the statement of proof of filing notice, all the taxing units were notified of the abatement, needs to be made a matter of record.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Okay. Yeah, so it's appropriate at this time for council to consider the confirming resolution. This is a resolution that Audra prepared, I've reviewed and approved. It's Resolution 2020-3, so I had to entertain a motion to introduce that by short title only at this time.
I'll make a motion to introduce the confirming resolution 2020-3 by short title only.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Confirming resolution number 2020-3, City Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, confirming resolution for the designation of an economic revitalization or upon the application of AB Cinema Inc.
Make a motion to pass confirming resolution 2020-3.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
For a resolution?
Oh, wait a minute, not for a resolution, sorry. I'm sorry. It was just a simple vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. I thought that was Miguel.
Too many, I read too many sealed bids.
Good. Congrats, Audra.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You know, a few years ago, you know, when you looked at what people run around town, everybody was asking for a cinema downtown, and it just seemed like it was never going to happen, and now we're going to have two. So, thank you, guys. Thank you for your hard work.
Okay.
Okay, all I have is RG Pittman, so. We have an event form for RG Pittman? Yeah, yeah. We have, you have the event form. So I think everyone's had a chance to get around all the department heads.
Archie, did you want to come up and talk, or that's up to you, if you want to add anything?
I think I presented everything that I needed to present at the time.
Yeah.
Russell or Kelly.
I think it's that.
What's the event?
This is for, we do Recover 2020, right?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
So the event's going to be, sort of, by the objective of is to help the community better get aware of the stigma surrounding people with addiction, and how we can get people in that need treatment or that have been in treatment to help others. So, it's bringing everybody together in one, and then we'll have artists perform that's coming in from Maryland, Connecticut, and Florida, that we've gotten grants approved for, and we're still working on some other grants as well, but everything's in motion and in the right areas, so.
And this is on the plaza?
This is on the plaza.
What's the date?
May 29.
Is that a Saturday?
It's a Friday evening.
Friday evening? Okay.
4:30 PM.
What sort of artists?
I'm sorry?
What sort of artists?
They're recovery artists. They're all recovery addicts. They've got a total of 30-plus years in recovery, so they're willing to come out and speak to others that are in active addiction. We have, we'll have people in place to get people into treatment, and as well as educational resources for the community, so. And then vendors, a lot of food vendors set up throughout the evening, securities are in place, so.
Are you, are you from Decatur?
I'm not originally from Decatur. I'm originally from Hartford City. I've moved up here in May of this last year.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
He is also requesting, if I understood correctly, did you want to close some streets or no?
So we'll be closing, it'll be the same as if it was the, like, the concert on the plaza set up, as, you know, we'll have Madison Street closed, just where the food vendors will be, and then to the plaza.
Okay. So that section of Second Street as well, then?
Right.
Yeah.
So you have the food vendors between Second and Third, just like they are on Thursday nights?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's from 3:00 PM till 11:30 PM to have the street closed?
Right, the setup will begin at 3:00, and then we'll start tearing down directly after. It'll be at 10:00 PM, so I put 11:00 PM just to be safe on...
But Second Street stays open?
Yeah, I think Second Street usually stays open.
Stays open until the event...
Until the actual concert starts.
Which is when?
It'll be, the concert will begin at 6:00, and it'll be over at 9:00.
Okay.
So we'll be out way before.
And that's what we've been doing, is about 6:00 o'clock.
Yeah, trying to organize it around, so about how, you know, the concert...
Just trying to keep it open for business.
Correct.
That's a lot of reasonable questions.
Yeah.
Good.
So we'll close it right before, or a little before the 6:00 o'clock?
Okay.
Are they going to need sound system, too? Yeah, he has it all checked.
So I have a, I do have a sound guy coming in. I talked to Craig about it a little bit, and we'll probably hook up to the plazas or the sound down there, so I was going to give a don, you know, and ask him about that, so...
Do you have a couple of different bands that are playing, or is that...
It's going to be, there's three artists coming in.
Okay.
But they all have, they'll coordinate together, like, they're all on stage together most of the time.
Okay.
When they're not on stage, they're in the crowd, and they're out talking to people in addiction or in recovery and doing education.
Craig has been a part of helping him get things organized.
That's right.
All right. So... You have a name, organization, you represent an organization?
Get sober, stay sober.
What is it?
Get sober, stay sober.
Get sober, stay sober. You have to register for this, or you just walk in?
No, you can buy tickets to, I have an event through Eventlink, or Eventbright, I'm sorry, and you can buy tickets to there, they're $15. And if you're a part of a brand, Better Life, Brand of Hope, then you get in for free, which is our local faith-based recovery program.
What's the name, where do you register?
Eventbright.
Eventbright.com.
Com.
I'll make a motion to approve the event as submitted.
The other thing Craig wanted me to ask is, is there going to be a $100 fee to rent the plaza? She goes, when I charge the $100 fee. There will be a charge of 100, or $50 for the restrooms, 25 for the electricity, and 25 for the sound system, but he didn't have a deposit check.
Was that just a deposit?
I asked Tyler, that's really a...
I think we decided that there would be a $100 rental on anything that wasn't open to the public.
Oh, I see.
It was a conversation that I remember having with council, as if, so it was a free public or is it going to benefit the public, and the understanding was that we were going to pass that on as if use the plaza, that's what it was for. Now, if it's going to be a private event, then I think that's where we came up with the $100 rental fee for the plaza.
I guess my question would be, since it is going to be for the community, I mean, is that able to get waived? Our budget is limited, you know?
Non-for-profits, you want?
An intended event.
Yeah. Drug Free Adams County Coalition is who's backing the event as well, so they are a 501(c)(3), so I don't know if that would affect that or...
Can we approve the event and look into that portion of it? I mean, I'm not questioning you, I just, we want to have consistency.
I appreciate that.
As somebody else is going to hear next meeting or next month wanting to use the plaza, we want to, it's still growing, this use of the plaza, we want to have our ducks in a row.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm fine with the event.
Yeah, I remember the conversation, I didn't...
We need to look back at our...
We need to probably go back and take a look at the minutes and see what was decided. I don't recall if...
Right, I'm almost positive it was, this is kind of like a catch-22 here, because it was non-for-profits or free, and it was open to the public, but if they're charging $15 a ticket to get in, then technically it's not really open to the public. I'm all right with the event, but I'd like to go back and review the minutes before we...
We can address that next meeting, that portion of it.
So, if you look back through the minutes, we did an identical Riverside, I remember I did non-for-profits at Riverside, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that we did identical rules.
Members of summer.
So I'll make the motion to...
I have a motion.
I'll second. Sorry, why?
Okay, have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, thanks.
Tyler, good.
Okay, I think the abate group's here to talk about the mayor's ride.
Yeah.
All right.
Hi.
Hello.
You're all listening here, oh!
They're sitting behind you. Why didn't they come up and join you?
They're afraid of me. Hi, my name is Sherry Gordon, and I represent Abate of Indiana. It's been, I believe, 2016 that we ended our annual mayor's ride in Decatur. Last year, we ended in Columbia City, and we had many people, "Why aren't we going to Decatur?" They love coming here, and we've always loved coming down here.
Yeah.
Abate is a nonprofit. For those that don't know, we are a politically active, not-for-profit charitable organization that's dedicated to the establishment, preservation, and defense of rights, liberties, and freedoms of all motorcyclists through the promotion of education and motorcycle safety. The event that we have every year, in fact, this is our 31st year, is the annual mayor's ride. It started many, many years ago as a governor's ride, and grew so big, they actually just kind of broke it up throughout the state, so each region, we are region zero, which encompasses Adams County. What we're looking to do this year, it's the first Sunday of June, it'll be June 7th, and we've already gotten permission to start again at the, where the old Kmart used to be. There's a storage place and a benefit fitness at South Anthony and US 27, south side of Fort Wayne. It is a police escorted ride. Marty Bender with the Fort Wayne Police Department usually coordinates with the county sheriff's department, and then the Decatur Police Department in Fort Wayne to give us an escorted ride. As of right now, the route is planned to come just straight down 27. My favorite memory of being here four years ago was as we came into town, where the families and the kids, we have grandchildren that will be riding with us in the ride, and seeing all the kids just in awe of all these loud bikes coming into town and stuff. As far as vendors go, we're actually, and worked out really well last year in Columbia City, we want to promote local business. So, we actually got out here early and went next door to Vinnie's and talked to Rick, and we want to use as many local businesses instead of bringing outside vendors in for food, so we would be contacting all the local eating establishments, drinking establishments in the area to promote them and their businesses, and give everybody a taste of Decatur when they come down for the ride. We're also going to contact Kyle Sliger to see if he's available. I don't know if you remember, he does an amazing stunt show, this kid is so talented. I believe we did it last time on the south side of the courthouse. We're going to contact him and have that. We will also have our Tiny Tots, and if you've never seen them, they are so much fun. They are little dirt bikes with training wheels, and the kids ride around an oval court. They are supervised by abate members, they have a helmet, and they just get that first taste of what it's like to ride on a motorcycle, and they do it safely. So, this is a family-friendly event, but we would like your permission to once again honor so many people that have asked us to come back to Decatur. We love coming here. It is June 7th, the first Sunday of June ever year. This year, we will be starting at 9:30 registration, kick stands up at 11:00, so we would be arriving in Decatur about noon, and we would be done by 5:00 o'clock. Do you have any questions for me?
Sherry, in years past, your group has been very respectful of Decatur. You bring a lot of people, and by the time it's over, you can barely tell they were here, so I appreciate that very much.
We love, yeah, we love coming down here.
It's been a great group to work with, fully supportive. I'd make the motion to approve the event as they presented.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I have the, does that look like it's all cold, the sensors are there?
And then you were going to provide me with a certificate of insurance?
I do, and what they gave me is, our insurance is actually through the state office. This is, we will get it about a month before, because we, it's based, our payment is based on the amount of participants. So this is a copy of the Frozen Buns Run for Region 3, which is the next region south of us, but it's got all the coverage that we would have in every subcutaneous. Copy, okay? And if it needs to be different, just let me know.
Does this usually get put out, or is that...
Our RI.
RRI.
You know, we've kind of reorganized it and stuff. Last year, we had about 140, but we have had upwards to 500, 600 participants.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know that we'll get a big increase again this year. Last year was very, very successful. We had Grote Automotive donated their big soundstage for us to use. We're seeking that out again this year. We have a local band in Columbia City, so we'll be looking for a local band. Rick has offered to help with that. We'll be promoting another, you know, a Decatur band for that, too, so.
Is there any designated, designated type of, a gift or anything for anything, or it goes to your group?
The money that we raise goes to Abate of Indiana for motorcycle safety and education. We do have, I also, and with Abate's Out on Bikes, we raise money for breast cancer patients, and we've set up here before, and we will be back here, too. We've gifted several women in Decatur. They're going to be setting up the Wounded Warrior Sub, is that what it is? Yeah, we're planning on having him there, too, so there'll be some other charitable organizations. People will not pay anything here. They will pay registration up in Fort Wayne for the ride, and then down here, what we do, what I did last year, instead of charging the local businesses a vendor fee, we asked for a donation for a door price. And so everyone that registers will get a ticket, and then we draw them once we get down here and get settled, and it, again, gift certificates to local businesses brings more tourism into Decatur, too, so it's a benefit for both of us.
Where are you going to be based out of here?
Do you need any?
Out here on Second Street is where the bikes are going to park at, between Monroe and courthouse. That's the courthouse. They set up around the courthouse.
Uh huh. Yes.
So, yeah, the street, yeah, the street closings were what she said, Second Street from Monroe to South and Adams, and then Madison, I can't read that, Madison.
Between Second, Third.
Second, Third and Court.
So around the courthouse and Monroe from here down to Adams.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thanks for coming back to Decatur.
Thank you.
Jeremy, I think you're, talking about rainy day funds for hand up in concrete?
Yes. Way it or not, the way the weather's been, we are making some great strides towards the hand up and project. Phyllis and I and Dan have met, we've reviewed some funds as to where we're at at this point, and what still needs to be paid. I would like to request some money out of the Rainy Day Fund to do some of the concrete work around the dugouts concession, kind of basically the common area, out of the Rainy Day Fund. I know we, you made a kind of a nod to Kurt as to the other sidewalk projects earlier in the board of works meeting, that would become out of the same fund on new construction sidewalks, so. Before we really talk a bunch of totals and a bunch of numbers and stuff, we really need to kind of see where the other sidewalk project comes in. But yeah, if there's any way that you would consider using some of that new construction sidewalk money for some of the sidewalks and some of the concrete areas out there, that would greatly help that project along. Just a one-year thing, you know, it's just something that, due to some of the donations and stuff still coming in, you know, we need to keep progressing the project along, and that would be an area that would really help.
What would be an estimated amount?
You're probably looking about 60,000 to 65,000 per end, or per, the west end and the east end would be 60,000 to 65,000 per end, so. We do have some other money set aside that we could use, but in order to hit our goals and hit some of the targets and stuff that we're hoping before the opening day, you know?
So we're looking about 130?
Rough way to do it all, I know we don't have that amount in the, in the fund.
What do, yeah, what do we have in the fund?
Well, there's 100,000 budget in the Rainy Day for various sidewalks in the city, and then we also have in the seat at 50,000 for this year, but that's part of the cost share. But I asked Kurt, and there's not a whole lot wanting to use that program right now, and maybe possibly we could use some of that. I'm okay with you guys.
And we did look at, Jeremy and I and Matt went out near the middle school entrance, and there's some area, we think we can get some sidewalks to help from Evergreen to, is it Belmont Boulevard? Or is it Edgemont?
The, the Edgemont.
Okay.
On the west side? Is it on the west side?
Be on the south, the south side of...
South, south side?
Would you return to go back to the apartments and be up to...
When I was out there the other day, there were some issues with the kids coming across the street down by the apartments, coming from the apartments, instead of coming down to the intersection where there was somebody there to help them, they were just running across there. So if we can get sidewalks across those yards, we can make, at least that whole area can cross in the same point.
Yeah, that absolutely needs to...
And in my doing this, you know, we're not draining all of our sidewalk funds, or there's still, we believe, ample, ample funds.
Yeah, some haven't signed up for 50/50 because it's winner.
Correct. And that, and the fund that we're talking about is a fund that we created a couple of years ago for in construction, so it all fits into the criteria.
Well, it's quickly, baseball signups are starting.
When's the season supposed to start?
I don't know.
We will find out tomorrow night.
We have a public meeting tomorrow night at Riverside, so.
Normally the boys start...
Six thirty.
Normally the boys start early May, girls start early June, so.
So are we also, in this, are we also talking about Monroe Street then, too? Or you just, you're just talking about hand up and...
For a hand up and at this point, yeah. You know, we don't have a total number yet of what that's going to take. You know, we did some rough calculations there. Phyllis and I talked about earlier, we're going to take a couple of guys out tomorrow and try and get it down to pretty much, you know...
So, are you thinking at least right now about the 60,000?
There probably won't be that much left in the fund, but by the time you do that on a project, so we're just 40/50 probably, right in that general vicinity.
Any other discussion?
Well, Monroe Street is a definite, we've got to do that.
The section we looked at only has a couple mailboxes and then one pedestrian sign, so it looks like it's going to help a bunch of kids, and it's also an area that we don't have to move a bunch of other items. Going further east, we have a lot of light poles and a lot of, so it's still in the plan, I believe, but it's, hopefully, maybe later on this year, we'll look at that.
I'm all right with using what we need to at hand up and, but I'd like to make a motion... I'm all right with using what we need to at Handin' Up, but I'd like to make a motion that we don't, I don't want to drain the funds in not too out by the school either, so I feel like that's something that...
Are we in a position that we can also approve this section that you're talking about, or are you not prepared to do that yet?
The section at Belmont?
Yeah, Belmont?
We're, we're going to do that one.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that, or are you...
That's one we're going to do in-house. It's a very short stretch, so we...
You were looking at less than, less than $5,000 to probably do that?
Yeah, it's like 40, $700 or whatever.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And it's something that we can probably do pretty much immediately.
Good, yeah.
You know, versus wait until midsummer, till we get a contractor in to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, please do.
So.
Does that require a motion, or just you're going to do it?
That's just going to be done.
He's got the funds budgeted, so he can just do it.
Just want to make sure where, if your terms are okay, what we're putting in towards.
We will get as creative as possible to try and leave this one sidewalk money in there, but it's, it's just going to get a little tight trying to get the rest of what we need to get done before opening day, so we just need a little help for that hard surface area.
Tyler, make a motion, I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Phyllis, are we still seeing money coming in? Was it like pledges in multi-year phases?
Four, eleven. We give reviews, donations in January, like 11, so.
When do we find out on that regional cities?
I don't know when the pledges are available.
Should find out next week.
They meet February 11.
Okay. Yeah, next week's when they meet again.
You don't know what the pledges were for how much?
The ones that came in this month?
Well, I mean, did some people pledge and did it all, they made the full payment, or is it spread out over a couple of years?
There's a few that have made their full payment already. There's one I have to check on yet, but...
Pretty much everything is pending.
Most, most of it's been paid.
I think most of it's been paid.
We're just trying to get enough things done that they can play baseball. I mean, there's some things that we're going to be lacking because...
And we can get it in the next year or two, three if need be, but get it open. Never done it before. We've got to figure out how to get it across the finish line.
Tim Baker, if you have a resolution?
This is, this is always kind of enjoyable thing for me, but there's a gentleman that did a lot for our community, and he's here tonight, and it's only fitting that we recognize him. So council, at the last meeting, asked that a resolution be adopted recognizing Bill Carbock for his years of service to our community. And so I would entertain a motion to introduce Resolution 2020-4 to be read in its entirety.
I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 2020-4.
I'll second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
And if you want, you may, while if you want to give it to the, the news, there's copies for them. Yeah. Yep. Let you come up here.
Yeah, come up there.
Your daughter can come with you, too.
Are you a car salesman?
Good for here, Tim Baker.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 2020-4, short title, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which recognizes William C. Carbock for his years of dedication and service to the cities, to the city and its citizens. Whereas William C. Carbock served the City of Decatur on its plant commission from January 1, 2004, to September 8, 2012. Whereas William C. Carbock served as the city's Board of Zoning Appeals from January 1, 2008, through December 31, 2019. And whereas William C. Carbock served as the city's, served on the city's Board of Public Works and Safety from January 1, 2008, through December 31, 2019. And whereas William C. Carbock served as the city's Code Enforcement Officer from May 2, 2011, through December 31, 2019. And whereas Bill, early on, recognized the need to update the city's comprehensive plan and the city's code of ordinances, both of which he strongly supported and assisted in so doing. And whereas during Bill's service in his many capacities, Bill was committed to implementing the updated comprehensive plan, and was committed to enhancing the quality of life within the city by giving serious consideration and attention to concerns of neighbors regarding nearby land use and development. And whereas during Bill's tenure on the bodies he served, Bill was a strong advocate of public safety, and in particular, a strong proponent of the Decatur Police Department regarding adequate staffing and compensation. And whereas throughout his career of public service, Bill carried out his responsibilities effectively, with a sense of good humor, in a spirit of seeking cooperation, and always guided by the desire to improve our city for all who call Decatur home. And whereas Bill's efforts over the years to make Decatur greater was a resounding success, and is most deserving of being recognized. And whereas the Common Council wishes to recognize Bill for his dedication to the citizens of the City of Decatur, and wishes to publicly thank Bill for his distinguished career, now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, as follows. Resolved, the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana hereby finds that during his years of public service, William C. Carbock served the City of Decatur admirably and with distinction. Resolved, William C. Carbock played a significant role in helping making, in helping make Decatur a more inviting community, a more attractive community, and in helping make Decatur a safer community. Resolved, William C. Carbock exemplified the concept that one person can make a difference, and personified what it means to be a selfless, public servant who is committed to serving others. Resolved, the members of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana hereby express for themselves and for the citizens of Decatur their heartfelt appreciation and respect for Bill for his years of dedicated service, his friendship, and the positive impact he left behind, and wish him nothing but the best in whatever the future may hold. Resolved, the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana hereby spreads this resolution among the records of Common Council, and directs that a copy be delivered to William C. Carbock in appreciation and recognition of his outstanding public service. Dearly passed, adopted, and resolved by the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana on this fourth day of February 2020. Signature for the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, the mayor, and Phyllis as the clerk treasurer. Now, before, just in case, there probably should be a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
I will gladly make that motion. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
So I'm going to pass this around, and we'll turn the floor over to Bill.
The only thing I wanted to do is actually thank you. It's very appreciated. I truly, like I told Tim, I don't think it's necessary. I've been thanked over the years many times, and that, to me, was sufficient, but I appreciate it. And I might also add that working with the council of Decatur over the years, and working with the directors, the co-directors, that it's been a very enjoyable time, and I appreciate that. And thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I think I have something, too.
I want to present the key to the city of America to Bill. When I first started with the city on the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Plant Commission, Bill was like a mentor. When I got there, I had no idea what I was getting into, but he showed me how you look at projects, you go out and investigate, don't just come to meetings and cast a vote. You know, go out and look at projects, you're on these boards to make the city of Decatur a better place. And he's shown that with all the hats that he just announced that he held in all these years. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Bill gives the one.
This is kind of ironic, because when I was at Wayne Novelty, Fred Ish came to me and said, can you make a key to the city? And I said, well, we'll try it. Well, we made this drawing, and we put this on our MC machine, and it actually made the keys to the city, the original keys to the city. No. It's better called, no. No, but we, we had a hot press and we stamped them. And so actually, this is kind of, Wayne now was denied, but when they went out of business, I'm sure Fred had to find another location, so I don't know where he found, but it's kind of run through his head. And my wife said, okay. There you go.
Bill, I want to thank you personally as well. Point out, Tim mentioned many hats you wore in the city, but two things that always stuck out to me that you were an advocate for. I've always been a stickler on the aesthetic look of Decatur. There's always been junk, be it buildings, trash, vehicles, but there's a lot less of it because Bill went out over and over in a correct manner, not belittling people, but helping them get it cleaned up, and I really appreciate that.
In tough situations.
In tough situations. And another thing Bill has always been an advocate for, we saw yet again here tonight before you arrived, we have another officer maybe leaving for another municipality, and you've always been a champion for the police and to get us up to the standard where we can build a force where we can keep them around. So I appreciate your advocacy for the police, especially today's day and age. I think it's going to be harder to get police that want to work in that line of work, so I appreciate all you did in helping move the PD into this next century, so really appreciate you.
If I can add one thing, I want to thank Joanne, because she gave up a lot of time with Bill to let Bill serve.
We're retired.
She thought, she thought every meeting went until 10 o'clock.
I think she either. And when I'd come to breakfast table without my shirt on, she would say, aren't you going to work? That was her first line. Yeah. Yeah. Are you going to stay home all day now?
Well, thank you very much.
I want to say thanks, too, Bill, because you had the thankless job of cleaning up the city.
Yep.
So many people hated you, but you had the thankless job of getting everything cleaned up.
And there were a lot of people that really liked you, too. The neighbors next door.
Well, the ones that gave the thumbs up.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
I was the one that heard the stories about, well, I got a two-by-four swung at me today, and that was true.
Bill always said, one was mad, but there was five or six around that were happy.
That were happy, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything from the department head? Lenny?
I just want to thank Bill. When I came on board in 18, he was an integral part on some of the things I wanted to do. We did a lot of discussion, very open-minded, but I do appreciate everything that you've done for me personally and the department. And I always told my guys, anything that Bill needs, you know, there are help, tagging vehicles, whatever, so I do appreciate it. One thing I have to add is, last week, we done a pedestrian safety with the school last week. Officer Bussie did a great presentation. I was there, Chief Deputy Bright was there, and seeing like the school and staff, and even on the public website of our Facebook, we got a lot of good publicity on that, so things are still going very well. I took them out out there, had a school traffic crossing guard, but I am making my officer show more present in the morning and afternoon, just to kind of keep things in perspective, so it's gonna be going very well. And as you mentioned earlier, we did recover those two stolen pedestrian signs. The detectives are still kind of working on that, and they'll ship those reports over to the prosecutor's office.
Thanks, Lenny. Kevin?
Thanks, Bill. That's, that's a lot of time. I ask you for things or requests and different things, and you always have our back when you, when you talk outside of the shit.
Bill?
Good job, Bill.
I can't hear that, Kurt.
Thanks, Bill. First thing you did for me for the last two and a half years, keep your calm, everything we're doing out of those portions that are around you, so I keep going. And then one last thing for the general public, we do have a no-burn ordinance in town. We had a few incidents over the last month, about three or four people we caught burning trash. Not a lot of burnt trash in the city, but it's, can burn wood, not trash. That's it.
Okay, Dolly?
Well, thanks, Bill. I know you were a big part, helped me get the tools, and you do my job. Very much appreciate it. Well, we will be starting the sewer behind Avon Marie in the next two weeks. That'll be tore up.
Okay, Jeremy?
So many changes come about when, when you were around, you know, over the last 12 years or so, that I've worked with you. We've made a lot of progress. I know we've talked a lot about different things, and it's, you've really helped us a lot. You gave me some chances that I really appreciate. This one, thank you. Thank you, we can ever do to help you, you let us know, everything's on the house. It's not the time to have your word. But thanks, Bill, thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Joe, for everything you've done.
Karen?
I would like to also thank Bill, because very evidently, I've here has worked in the way to our department, obviously.
Okay, anything from council? Phyllis?
Thanks, Bill. I miss you. I've thoroughly enjoyed working with you.
I miss you, too.
You can come up and visit anytime.
I know. I told him, show us the same thing.
He was here yesterday.
Was he? What? I told him how to get up there, and I said, when the door opens, wave at him.
Tim, you know, I got to read the resolution, but Bill's become a really good friend, and I, you know, I truly enjoyed that as much as anything. He's been a great guide for our community, but I value his friendship as well, and I think probably everybody in this room can say the same thing. So thanks, Bill.
Well, I might add that I told you I didn't want to come.
I know.
And Dan knows this also, but when somebody calls me up and says, would you do a favor for a friend? Kind of got you there, didn't it? Did you?
Well, thanks for letting us recognize you, Bill.
Yeah, absolutely. Community's indebted to you, Bill. You've done a lot for us.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Anything from public, from media? Okay, take a motion to adjourn. Oh, claim. Motion to pay the claims. Better pay. Second. Motion and a second, pay the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign.